Okay, how's that? Can you hear now? Okay, so, take two. This is the regular Board of Selectmen meeting, March 28th. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to make comment or pose a question on any matter that may be before the Board. Item two is approval of minutes. There are two sets of minutes. The first one is from our February 28th meeting. That was a regular meeting. And I'll entertain any motion to amend, correct, and then approve. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Then there was a special meeting held on March 4th, and there's a set of draft minutes. I just have a question on five. It says that there were two nominations made following candid interviews conducted in executive session. Are we going to insert those? Are they? Okay, I'm seeing, I'm seeing in part of my, I don't know, we act as, I was looking up here. Okay, so that's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay, item number three is updates. Just quickly run through. On March 6th, we had a proclamation for Red Cross Month. The American Red Cross Metro New York Region was here with their field staff and office staff to commemorate this annual event. It brings awareness as to the role that the Red Cross plays in providing relief in times of disaster. This is an organization that has a long and proud history, and we're pleased to continue to support it. On March 7th, the Director of Environmental Affairs, Pat Sesto, in Conservation Chair, Bill Rutherford, provided an annual update. During this meeting, we discussed many of their accomplishments over the last year. As you may recall, we transitioned the role of Conservation Director and Inland Wetlands Director into one position, which is the Director of Environmental Affairs. This has resulted in really a greater focus and collaboration between the two organizations and with the myriad of environmental groups throughout the town. Not to read through their whole list of priorities in supporting tasks for '19, but just to give you the idea of the breadth, I'm just gonna read the broad titles. They're dealing with water supply, open space, wildlife and habitat management, community sustainability, which includes coastal resiliency and sustainability, as well as energy, solid waste reduction, cultural, historic, and scenic resources, and outreach and education as part of their overall plan for the coming year. And again, I wanna commemorate them and tell them, I think they're doing a great job. On March 12th, I participated in the Community Service Awards for the Greenwich Public Schools. This is an annual event going back about 30 years. It was started by former school Superintendent Ernie Fleishman, who each year reminds us why he did this. And he did this because he had been driving down Route 1, and he saw signs that said, you know, "Welcome to Greenwich, Connecticut, home of football champions, baseball champions." And he thought, "Well, in addition to athletics, there are academic and community service champions as well." And he started this program. And it really culminates with one student receiving the Fleishman Award. And this year, the Fleishman Award was given to Allison Brea. And again, really, I think it's a hallmark of, one of the hallmarks of our public school system. On March 15th, I traveled over to Stanford. And you might say, "Why Stanford?" We were invited to participate in a business there that's having its 10th anniversary. That business is opening a franchise here in Greenwich, and that is the Stanford Ford Lincoln. They are now opening Lincoln here in Greenwich, which is going to be on the corner of Josephine Evaristo Avenue in West Putt. The owner, Dominic Franchella, and his wife are on hand with their daughter, as well as their 10-year-old golden doodle, and a host of other folks from corporate to talk about how their employees, and this is an important message, their employees were the reason for their success over the term, in that they've grown their employee base and they recognized several employees who've had long careers with that organization predating Mr. Franchella. Also, on the 15th, it was great to see our younger generation engaged in civil community activism. More than 200 students from Greenwich Country Day marched from their campus to Town Hall to voice their support for environmentally safe and sustainable life practices in the face of climate change. This group was led by Laura DeBonaventure. Laura is not only a faculty at GCDS, she is also an alternate member of our Conservation Commission. I was joined at this event by Senator Alex Bergstein and Representative Livy Florin, as well as Congressman Jim Himes. So really had a representation from federal, state, and local government. And again, if you haven't seen the report on it, oh, and John Tonner, I can't forget John. You're hard to, how do I play? You're not easy to miss. I mean, you stand out. So yeah, John was there as well. Pardon me, John. You could attest to the number of kids and their enthusiasm. Talking about youth, I had an opportunity to sit down with our Youth Services Director, Danielle Sitol. If you have not met Danielle, I would encourage you to do so. She is tremendously energetic and thoughtful in what her ideas are. She shared with me what this group of young people are undertaking. They just completed a diversity program. They are in the process of working on a diversity conference for 2020, a vaping presentation targeting middle school parents. This is something that they came to through their own initiative. They are also looking to raise funds for college scholarships for seniors. They're also working on doing a program on community-wide mental health, a survey. And another initiative they'd like to do is give greater awareness to the Bowman Observatory, which, for those of you who may be astronomically inclined, that's the proper term. There is a facility that is on Millbank, near the Julian Curtis School, that the town maintains in a private group or non-profit group schedules. In my 50 years, I've never been in it. I'm sort of curious to see what it's about. But they're also working with ABELIS, some of their summer programs. And then finally, we're going into, I believe it's our 10th annual Defining Diversity Writing Contest. Earlier, late last year, we named this in recognition for Alma Rutgers, who was Chair of the First Selectmen's Diversity Advisory Committee. And this is the 10th year, and the students have worked to raise the $1,100, which is really the prize money that go to the various recipients, which, I mean, that in itself is a first. Each time, we've usually had to appeal to the generositys of different departments, whether it be Human Resources, or the schools, or in one case, Alma herself underwrote this. So, looking forward to hearing those sometime in May. There'll be a presentation. It's usually here where the recipients will be announced, as well as excerpts from their works read. And then finally, Danielle is working to establish the representatives for the next year already. There are six schools. There are four from, each school gets four delegates. Greenwich Academy, Sacred Heart, Brunswick, GCDS, and of course, GHS. One of the discussion points that we were having is that, given the size of GHS, should they have additional representation? Because if you look at it from a representation point of view, is GHS worthy of a greater Yesterday, I had the pleasure of promoting by administering the oath to Robert Roth. He's a firefighter who was promoted to Fire Inspector. His, let's say, claim to fame truly is that he established the car, child car safety seat program in the Greenwich Fire Department many, many years ago. He's probably installed over 1,000 car seats. He's someone who has individual, took individual initiative. I learned a little bit more about him yesterday in that his academic background is actually in photography. He has a degree in professional photography. But he was promoted, and we joined with his family in wishing him well. On Monday, we are going to be administering the oath to three firefighters who are assigned into the academy. And we are also in the next, oh, did I say police or fire? Police. Police, sorry. Getting my emergency services, Chris Ross, police. On Monday, at 1:00 here. Tonight is the Budget Decision Meeting for the BET. Tony, it begins at 4:00. So for those who really wanna see how your money's spent, come. This is like, you know.
Or not.
(laughing) Good point. This is like the, I don't know, the Academy Awards of Government in Greenwich, is the BET Budget Decision Meeting. It's been a long haul. I just wanna give, again, my appreciation and thanks to the town departments that have been working through the various committees of the BET and so forth, as well as the many citizens who have come forward to lend their voice to the various issues. I also wanna, just one other quick thing, and I have a further topic on budget and deliberations. I received back in January, and I did not have a chance to acknowledge it, a letter from Stephen Fox, who owns Stevens Fox Jewelry. And his letter was acknowledging and appreciating a job well done to the Greenwich Police Department for the formation of the Organized Retail Crime Team. This initiative really came out of redeployment of personnel who've been assigned to Marine during the season, targeted to this specific task. And he writes the extensive letter about, you know, how putting plainclothes police officers undercover at retail gives downtown Greenwich the edge in deterring crime before it starts and apprehending those who do us harm. Combating successfully and consequently makes Greenwich a model community for both its residents and visitors. It is due to your astute leadership, and, he's not speaking about me, he's speaking about Chief Hebe, it is due to your astute leadership and the actions of your crime team associates, Detective Mark Solomon, Ryan Beatty, Christian Rosario, and Michael Hall, that I wanted to extend my gratitude and heartfelt thank you. So, thank you to our PD. Coming back to the budget deliberations, I just wanna say that there are a number of issues that always come before us as public officials. Some of them perhaps seem weightier than others, or there's deeper emotion tied to them. I never thought that a fire station would evoke such passion as it has, or the quest for a fire station. But this week, there was really what I would characterize as a very unseemly email sent to members of the BET. And it went to the BET from a, I gather, a call a fictitious email address. And it was sent just to the 12th. And it cast very serious aspersions on a member of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting and her husband, who happens to be my colleague, Sandy Lippack. The email, I believe, was designed to not only cast aspersions and intimidate, it is fraught with misinformation. And I'm not going to repeat verbatim what it said, because then I think you just give rise to it. But the simple fact of the matter is, the intentions displayed by Ms. Joanna Swamley and Mr. Sandy Lippack have been nothing but pure as it comes to the desire to have a Northwest Greenwich Fire EMS station. I can tell you candidly, our relationship really began, what, December? Our cordial relationship began December 1st of 2017. But when we sat at the RTM, and this had come up, you know, I shared with Sandy the quest for, what the objections were, and he lent his support, saying, "Well, if you wanna pursue this, I'll do this." Joanna and her team of District 10 members pulled together, and we've really worked in a collaborative fashion to present a rationale, again, as to why there is a safety need there. Coming back to this lewd assertions, focus on a particular property which we previously had already gained BET approval to purchase, RTM rejected. But the fact of the matter is, we're looking at multiple properties. So for the person to focus exclusively on this property, they're just factually incorrect, too, neither Mr. Lippack or Ms. Swamley ever have spoken in favor of this particular property. In fact, to Ms. Swamley's credit, she has advised us to look more broadly and extensively in the Northwest. So, that in itself is just unconscionable. There are other assertions that are, I believe, more, what I would describe as political and opinionated about style, tactic, and so forth. The problem when something like this arises is, it then gets circulated. And there was a member of the RTM who circulated it to her district. And in circulating it is essentially perpetrating the gross negligent assertion. So, I just wanna be clear today that, I hope, and I'm coming to a close of 32 years of service to the town, 20 as a volunteer, that we don't continue to dissipate into an abyss of this type of behavior. This isn't why people wanna get involved. We could have differences of opinion. I know it's hard. I'd be very candid, it's sometimes hard for me. But you gotta kinda rise above and not take personal attacks and cast aspersions. It's very destructive. And frankly, it will be the destruction of our system if we have this continue. So, we all could agree to disagree on things. Different perspectives make the world go around. But let's be civil about it. Let's understand that that's what people are looking for. They really want people to get along. And disagree, disagree vehemently, but don't cast aspersions on people. So, I just wanna say, Joanna, I'm sorry that you had to be the target of this, and Sandy, that you had to be the target. I think, what are we gonna do about it? I've asked IT if they could identify the email sender. Does it corroborate with anybody else who's sent email? I'm not necessarily a tech person, but I've been around long enough to know, this is not the first time. Things have been sent this way. I get them. They're either under the guise of Greenwich taxpayer, or concerned citizen, or resident. And, you know, I've gotten them over my 12 years across the hall, and many a times, I have no way of verifying, and they go to the circular. But this required response, and I hope we all can appreciate the severity of this type of destructive action.
Yeah, I'm going to just add the following, really. First, thank you, Peter, for doing that and making the statement that you made. I personally am less concerned about the attack on me. I've been in corporate life, I've been in government, I've been in public life. But, and here is the thing that disturbs me, it's part of why I ran in 2017, it's part of what disturbs me today. I've talked to Peter about it. I know he agrees with me, and he just touched upon it. I wanna emphasize it. Our way of talking and interacting with each other is falling apart. And it's not just in Greenwich, it's in this country. And we make the mistake of saying, "Well, that has nothing to do with Greenwich." Yes, it does. This is an example of what's happening. As Peter said, it is fine to disagree. It is fine. I said when I was sworn in, "We can disagree without being disagreeable." But some of us seemingly can't. And to add to the insult to injury in my judgment, if you wanna speak up, if you wanna be nasty about it, have the integrity and the guts to put your name on it. If you can't put your name on something, you shouldn't be saying it, or writing it, or doing it. My gosh, this is a town where we talk all the time about volunteerism. We talk about people cooperating. We talk about people putting themselves out. How long is anyone gonna wanna do it when they are vilified by their colleagues and by other members? Peter has set an example here, and I wanna commend him personally, because I told him I wanted to talk about this, and he said, "No, I feel more strongly I wanna talk about it." And I said, "Go for it, because he does feel strongly, and I appreciate it." But I tell you all, and you ought to tell everyone you know in this town, stop it. Stop it. And if you have a problem, identify yourself, speak up, and say it. But say it in a way that is likely to persuade, not alienate. And that's what we're doing here. So, I'm gonna end just by saying, it's an unfortunate experience, it hopefully won't be repeated, and not just Peter, but every town official I know who has heard about this, the BET members, et cetera, both parties, this is not a partisan issue, have rebelled against this and said, "This is unacceptable, and we will not tolerate it, and we will not respond to it, and we will do what we can to ferret out people who do this and identify them, so that all of us know who they are."
Okay, that concludes Updates, Old Business. We have no Old Business today. Under New Business, we have a presentation from representatives of the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Welcome. We're sorry that you had to sift through our local parochial issues, but as you could see, they have, they transcend elsewhere, and they happen here, too. Despite what, despite what they think about us in Hartford, we are real. We have real problems. And we welcome you. So today, we're here to review a detour for a bridge project, which is over Lake Avenue. And Ilona Capola from Connecticut DOT is with us to review it, and we welcome you. And please come forward, and we're having some, you know, technological issues with our systems.
It should work.
But it should work.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Ilona Capola from, I work for the Department of Transportation. And we're gonna give you a brief description of the rehab of the bridge that we're gonna be performing from, on Lake Avenue. This rehab of the bridge includes the removal of the existing beam, the existing deck, and the parapets, and they'll be replaced with new ones. The construction is starting to begin sometime next week, and this is gonna, is projected to be completed by the end of this year. So now, the construction is gonna require us to close, fully close, the bridge itself and provide a detour around that bridge. And our designer here, Ryan Martin, from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, is also gonna present you the details of that detour.
Thank you for having us today. So the detour, as you can kinda see on your, on your plans there, goes from Lake Avenue to Lower Cross Road, up to North Street, over to Clapboard Ridge Road, Grampton Lane, and then comes back to Lake Avenue. Total, it's an eight-and-a-half mile detour, if you were to start on one side of the bridge and wanna get to the other side during construction. Duration of the detour is proposed for 17 weeks. And we had, because of the, because we need to take down the existing bridge, put new steel in, put new deck on, and that, duration of that's gonna take full 17 weeks to complete. We looked at several options before initiating the detour for this. We initially, we first wanted to do stage construction, but with the layout of the bridge, there's only four steel members going across, it really just wasn't, wasn't possible to do safely with the public. So, we settled on a detour pretty early in the design of this project. We first came to the town in October of 2016, where you also agreed that a detour was necessary for this. And in April, we had a public information meeting here that seemed well-received by the public. We also sent notices of the detour to everybody in the close proximity of the bridge at that time. So recently, I think it was you, Barbara, you saw the plans and had a couple comments on them about?
Oh, I'm wrong first. Okay, sorry, I wanna.
Sorry, Barbara. We presented the town with the construction plans for the detour recently, and we did have a couple comments regarding some signs that they would like added. So we did add those signs. If you look at the plans I gave you, the ones that are in kinda clouded, those are the additions to the initial plans that are a result of correspondence with the town. Mainly, it was just letting some of the motorists on nearby streets alert of the detour before they were to drive up to the bridge, such as at Clapboard Ridge Road, Butternut Hollow Road, and Ridge Street. We also added some more notifications on the Merritt Parkway as well, to let them know that the bridge was closed. So those signs are going up north of North Street and then south of Lake Ave, over by Round Hill. With that, we are seeking approval from the Board for this detour, which is scheduled to begin on June 21st. We have it in the contract documents that it can't begin until 5:00 PM, which is the last day of school. So that gives time for the buses to get home, and then the summer and the beginning of the next school season is when the detour would be in place. So that's the evening of June 21st through October 20th, 2019, we're proposing. I would like to add, besides the detour, we will need some alternating one-way traffic on this bridge to do the work. We're hoping to get that one-way alternating started in April. And then after the detour is completed, we'll need that again to do some finish work on the bridge.
How do you plan to deal with the issue of the school buses once school resumes? If you're not planning to be done till the end of October, school begins the beginning of September, but you're gonna have at least a one to six, six weeks to one month overlap?
Right, right. And our thought is that the buses will have to take an alternate way on Lake Avenue at that point.
How much is that gonna add time-wise to the kids on the bus?
I'm not sure what the, what the bus routes are there, sir.
I would recommend you reach out to our Board of Education Transportation Coordinator, Vicky.
Okay. Okay.
Bring her fully into the loop as to the proposed detour. Because she's gonna have to then work to try to.
Yeah.
Okay, I will do that. And Vicky's last name is?
Greg.
Greg.
They're across the field.
Oh, okay.
If you're looking for them physically, they're not here. They're across the, in that.
All right, we'll do that. Thank you.
Anyone here have questions?
Are you going to preserve the, the way the bridge looks?
Yes, actually, it is a very unique bridge. And we've taken a lot of measures to maintain the, the historic look of the bridge. And it's, we tried to replicate it as close as possible to how it is existing right now. And I think when construction is complete, you'll see we succeeded, hopefully. But yes, in the Merritt Parkway Conservancy Group was heavily involved in the design of this as well. And they're, they're happy with what we're proposing.
This may be way out of line, but I'm just curious. Could you adjust the schedule so that you started later in the morning when school starts? I'm, I'm back in September, October. And finish, you know, break somewhere so that you're minimally interfering with the school buses? I'm just concerned, when you talk about an eight-mile detour, the kids sitting on the bus long enough as it is, what can you do to ameliorate the situation?
So in order to, to have the bridge safe for, for vehicles and pedestrians across, we really, I really do feel that we limited it to seventeen weeks as much as possible. Some of the accelerated bridge construction methods just weren't available for this type of structure because...
I, I wasn't suggesting that you could do it in less than seventeen weeks. What I was suggesting, maybe it would be eighteen weeks, but that could you adjust the time during the day so as to minimize the impact on the school bus? Instead of starting, whatever time you start in the morning, start a little later so that the buses can get through.
By the time the bridge, by the time it's gonna, the bridge is gonna get open. Yeah, so, but we do have a nine-to-three construction. So the peak hours between six and nine, there wouldn't be any lane closures. And, and three to six. So we do have that window that, if the bridge does get open, we will have that window for everybody to pass through before we can alternating lane closure.
Okay, and I guess all I was saying is, try to see when those school buses are going through. And if it requires moving to nine-thirty, or three-thirty, or two-thirty, you might consider doing.
Any other comments? The only other question I have is, so you're coordinating, obviously, with state police on the, on the bridge between. Have you had any contact with the Greenwich police in terms?
We already had, we already had our work zone safety meeting, and we had a representative from the town police in that meeting, and they're aware of it.
And then during the course of the project, you know, we've had discussions on other significant town projects on how to best publicize or continue to remind. Is there a website for this project?
We do, we have, we don't have a website, but we do put out press releases if we do have major closures. And we've already informed the, the town police that we will be providing them that press release as well, so they can spread the word to the town.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, that you'll be communicating with the police?
Yes.
Your expectation is that the police will communicate to the residents through the various media?
Right, and we also work, yes. We also work with the, the town engineer as well, so. Yeah, they will be informed.
Hi, can I speak one time?
Sure.
I'm technically off today, but for those who don't know, when I'm at work, I am Melissa Evans, the Traffic Operations Coordinator. And although I'm here on vacation, doing other things today, but I just felt the need to say one thing. In regards to what you just said, one of the things that we always ask, and even that we try to do with town projects, is put signs up ahead of time. They should be on the Merritt, and they should be on Lake Avenue in both directions at least two weeks before the actual closure. And they should say specifically the dates, you know, that the closure is going to begin, and then, you know, leading up to that, changed over and covered up to then, you know, actual the detour signs. That just gives people, as they drive by every day, the notification that the road will be closed at a certain point. And I also just wanted to add, I don't know if it affects anything, but you should double-check the school schedule, because there was a snow day that the school did end up having. So I don't know if they bumped the last day of school now to, you know, an, an extra day.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And I think when you spoke to Vicky, Greg, you would get that detailed information.
Okay, I, I will add to the contract documents. They actually state to, to, that they can't begin the detour until 5:00 PM on the last day of school. The last I knew, it was, it was the 21st, but the contract doesn't say the 21st. It says the, after the last day of school.
How about the notices? How far in advance will they be put up?
Two weeks. And, and they do say, "Lake Avenue Bridge to be closed," and it has the dates on it.
Do you want, you can have this back, if the press votes want it, they... So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Lake Avenue detour beginning at 5:00 PM on the last day of school, June, whichever that is. It's listed as June 21st. And then reopen to the normal or alternating one-way traffic operations on October 21st, 2019.
I, I second it, but I think it ought to be subject to their coordinating with the school transportation people to make sure that we're minimizing the amount of time that the kids are on the bus, okay?
Agreed. Yeah, thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
And you can communicate to the three of us, through Barbara, who we've been talking to, just if there's anything, so that we can be sure that it gets to the public. Thank you. Have a nice trip back up north. Okay, the next, the next item before us is under New Business, Temporary Road Closure. This is North Maple Avenue, and you have Jesse... Kida? Kida. From Lewis Tree, you're with us. And they're requesting a road closure for Tuesday, April 16th, 2019, along North Maple Avenue, from Lake Avenue to Houston Lane. They're hoping to have the closure from 8:30 AM to 3:30 PM to remove five large maples trees near the power lines with the assistance of a crane, and are looking to minimize the impact to school buses and traffic by doing this during spring recess.
And we are, so is it April 16th, spring recess?
It is during that period. Starts Monday, the 15th thing continues to the end of the week.
Now, here's the thing, though, in Greenwich, we have public and private.
Yes, you do.
I believe public is that time, but I think private is in session. That is in proximity to two of our larger private schools, Brunswick?
Yep.
And Greenwich Academy. So I can only imagine, and because they're...
If we, we can move that back to nine o'clock, maybe, then, if we can, so that...
Again, I would, I would do that. I also would coordinate with them and use your communication to advise them that you're doing this work, so that they're alerted. So it's Brunswick School, and it's Greenwich Academy. Mar Avenue and...
Sure, surely, yeah, I guess, because of...
I'm just trying to think of some start. Eight thirty might actually work for this one. I would just, you can check at them.
I have contacts at both schools. I can, I can make, I'll talk to them.
That might, eight thirty might still work. The three-thirty, though, might be the one that's the problem.
I'm hoping to, I'm gonna put a full force of crews up there, working with the crane. So three-thirty is the drop dead time, but I, I hope to be done well before that with the major work allowing traffic to go by in one lane with the assistance of officers during that time also. So you hit a lot of the high points that we need to, that, in, in the, in the, in the opening statements. So I will have detour signs running from Houston Lane up to Rockwood. There's Laurel, and there's one other street I don't remember, but it's in the proposal, where we would put up some detour signs from one side, and then from Rockwood down to Lake for the other side, diverting traffic around our work zone. The, the major request is for the crane, which has a nineteen-foot, nineteen-foot footprint, and operating safely, and we wouldn't be able to have traffic pass. This will increase the time, or decrease the time it will take to get the trees down in that neighborhood, so that we can open up traffic quickly and safely again. All of this work to be done is to reduce outages caused by trees that are unhealthy near the power line.
You just answered my question. You're removing the trees because they're unhealthy, is that...
Yes. They, they went through a, a notification period and a hearing, and these five trees were deemed unsafe near the power lines through the tree warden and the committee hearing.
By the way, have you met our new tree warden?
I have not met Dr. Kramer yet. Hope to soon. I know that we're gonna coordinate a meeting through Tracy, quickly.
Great, yeah. He's on the second floor. He just started last Monday.
Okay. All right, I'll probably stop by my way up and give him my business card, too.
What did you say? This one will return phone calls.
I hope.
So anyway, there's...
Any additional questions? No.
One more thing.
Yeah.
Just, I don't know, you need to apply for a highway permit after you get there.
Okay. And I would get that through...
So if you're gonna go up to the second floor?
Yep.
Public Works, the Highway Division, you can pick up an application there and make it somewhere.
Thank you.
Okay, and you, you've got the police noted here, hiring three officers to assist in traffic control and allow homeowners access to the residences that are within the road closure area.
Correct.
And if there's inclement weather, you're hoping to push the road closure to the 17th.
Correct. Everything is on a contingency basis. The officers, through my contact, have been set aside or the propose, or the request made, so that the 16th are ready to run with, with approval to, to make this happen and, and impact the area as lightly as possible.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the requested road closure for Lewis Tree and Eversource for North Maple Avenue from Lake Avenue to Halsted?
So moved. Second.
Without objection.
Thank you.
Item C is a request for modification to the Code of Ethics regarding disclosure of financial information. We have with us our town attorney, Wayne Fox.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This concept is reasonably straightforward. Just by coincidence, I know that the chairman of our governance committee, the RTM, is here this morning, and I can tell you, they have been working rather diligently for the last year or so. We expect to see some proposals from them in the not-too-distant future. This concept, I was originally going to propose as part of that package when we get to it, but it's been sitting here for some time. I thought it was more appropriate to deal with it individually. Simply put, at the suggestion of Mr. DeBarry, who's chairman of that committee, the Ethics Committee, they want to make the concept more flexible, more easily workable. So they are proposing, in addition to what exists now under, under that, under Section 2-9, there would also be established by the, by the Board of Ethics, a process by which the information may be submitted electronically. In addition to that, they want to specifically state that that board would have the flexibility to change that qualifying number under which you would have to report. And finally, they would work with the town clerk to see to it that the information with respect to these documents would, would be more readily available. And in summary, is what this proposes.
Why is there an absolute dollar amount rather than a percentage?
I don't, that's been in place for a hundred years.
All deference to my ancestors. That's silly. Why would you have a dollar amount? It ought to be a percentage. I could have a $10 interest in a $11 project, and my interest is substantial. I could have a $10 interest in a $1,000 project, and my interest is not substantial. So why would you pick a dollar amount and say, "That's the test"?
I don't know for sure. Haven't raised that question with the committee. My belief is that they felt that this has worked for many years. It's simple and straightforward. There's no reason why it can't be changed. I'd be happy to take that up with them if you would like.
I would suggest you do, because a flat dollar amount really doesn't take account of what you're trying to measure. You're trying to measure whether somebody has a substantial financial interest in something that is impacted not by the absolute dollar amount per se, but rather by the relationship to the venture in which they have the interest. So one ought to move in relation to the other. So I suggest you ask them about a percentage.
I have to assume that their belief was, if one has an interest in excess of a given dollar amount, whatever the percentage, that that should be considered as a matter of policy to be a substantial interest. But I'd be happy to take it up with them.
Really? If you had a $100 interest in a $1 million project, they think that would be substantial?
That appears to be what they have thought.
I, I would like to do that. I, I would have to do that.
I'd be happy to do that, yes, sir. I have no difficulty in taking up that issue with the board and coming back to you if you would prefer.
I, I would propose that we put this off and have it for the next agenda, and have Wayne advise us at that time if the legislative position is...
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, D, was a request by Selectman Lookback to discuss his request to investigate unauthorized filming here at Town Hall. We have an email dated March 18th that delineates that. I know that by way of background, the legal department has responded to several freedom of information requests, both from the individuals who were depicted, and the press, I believe, that requested that. And through the course of that, I believe he also has discussed with a number of the personnel who may or may not have access to various rooms in, in this building. By way of background, so the town has surveillance cameras in our building. It says so when you enter the building. You will notice those signs on both the front door and the side doors. That has been in effect for several years, and frankly, from a security point of view, was instrumental in eating the apprehension of a criminal who wound up in our basement several years ago. So in addition, so in addition to those cameras, there's monitors that are behind the desk of the receptionist. From what I have been told about those cameras, they do record, but over a period of time, they're overridden, so there's a certain length or duration on those particular monitors. I believe the other issue is the 79 cameras. We are in one of, I believe, two rooms that have these cameras. They are operated by GCTV, Channel 79. They also have, I believe, in this case, we can see access. That room particularly is a key. Upstairs has some kind of card key. And again, as, I'm giving your report, because when I asked you, you told me this. So help me out here if I forget something. So that particular card key also has a duration like our door here at the Selectmen's, which are different from what I was told. We do have, we do have a monitor in the Selectmen's office. Unlike a camera, the monitor just shows you who is there in the moment. Unlike a camera, the monitor just shows you who is there in the moment. So it's, you're at the door, we could see you at the door, or we can see you from behind the reception desk. I believe the issue here is that an organization, I would say rented the room, reserved the room for usage, and during the course of their use, usage, they have been photographed. The question is, well, how did they get photographed? From what I was told, some of the photographs were from walking by. And the specific issue I think we're dealing with here is the presumption that one of the pictures was taken from the GCTV cameras, which begs the question, how did someone get access to the GCTV cameras? We do know, and I believe you responded to that request as to who has access to that, and that's where the issue, that's where the issue presently sits. I know you wanna talk about it further. I have had an opportunity to also ask questions about this room in part because of the difficulty we're having with the equipment. So we know fairly certainly that right now, in this room, sound is a problem. So if we did not have this, we could all be sitting here and we would see nothing but bodies with no audio. The camera and the audio system, I believe, are separate. I know when we are in the cone room, similarly, if you do not have a microphone, you're not picked up. So in terms of sound, I don't think you can capture sound without the microphone, just operational. I think going forward, what I would like to propose is that we don't know, we go into executive session, in fact, we have someone waiting to be interviewed for a board, and we go into executive session and our request is, okay, we're going into this executive session to discuss pending litigation, settlement of claims, interviews, we are told the cameras are off. But how do you really know? As someone said to me, how do you really know? I generally think if someone tells me that they're off. But, you know, when we're specifically talking about litigation, which has high dollar amount, I think that's a big exposure if you don't know. So should there be some delineation? I see a red light there. Does the red light go off? Is that assured that the cameras are off? So I think we need some form of notification in these rooms by GCTV as to when their equipment is or is not operational. And that's something I think, you know, we need to talk to them about. Right, go ahead. Go ahead with some of my thoughts.
No, that's, that's fine. I, I, obviously, I did ask, as you noted, that this be placed on the agenda because this is a serious concern to me and I think it is to you and to John and to the board in general. Obviously, I should acknowledge that it may be more personal to me because the unauthorized video was taken of people who were working on my campaign at the time, and so I feel that personally. And further, one of the people who is in the picture is my wife, so I feel that even more personally. So this is a personal concern, but having said that, the fact is the incident transcends my campaign or my personal interests. And it does pose some serious questions for us as town officials. As you said, Peter, the first question is, how did it happen? Who was responsible? And how do we prevent it in the future, which is really, in some ways, the most important of all? I wanna make sure that we are doing what we can to determine the answer to those questions. And as some of you know, or maybe all of you know, the whole thing was compounded. I mean, it's bad enough that it was done, but the truth is, we wouldn't even know that it was done, to your point, unless somebody had taken, given it to a former party official who then had the bad judgment to post it on the internet, which is the good news and the bad news. The bad news is that he did it. The good news is that it told us we have a problem. And now the question is, how do we, how do we deal with that problem? I think, and one of the questions I wanna ask Wayne, and Wayne is here and I appreciate it, is since we do have a card swipe system, what does the card swipe tell us about who was there on the day in question? And by the way, we know the particular day, it was September twenty-one, nineteen, twenty seventeen, so we know when it was, we know about the time. There were three people depicted in the picture. As I said, my wife was one of the three. So we, we know some of that, and the question is, what are we going to do and how are we going to investigate it? And I think at this point, and Wayne can correct me if I'm wrong, we're doing nothing. And that, to me, is unacceptable. We, we do have to do something here. Now, I, I wanna touch on something because, and I don't know where I read this, but somebody or somebodies have been saying, well, there's no expectation of privacy when you're in Town Hall. First of all, I disagree with that. When you're in a room that you have reserved in Town Hall, you have an expectation of privacy for the purpose for which you are using. But candidly, even if that were not so, even if it were otherwise true, and I find that hard to accept, the fact is, this taping was not authorized, to the best of my knowledge, by anyone here, any of the selectmen's, and therefore it was an unauthorized taping, even if you assumed for a moment that the town could properly do it, which I would not agree with, but if you assume it could, it did not in this case. This was unauthorized unless someone wants to tell me they authorized it, and I know nobody here did. So therein lies the problem. Now the question again, as I said three times, is what do we do? I think, I'd like to get our town attorney to give us his thinking on what we do. I think it's a police matter. I think it's a crime that has been, that has occurred. It's not a violent crime, but it's a serious crime. And as you correctly noted, Peter, it's not just the one here, but there were all the pictures taken from outside as well. That almost suggests that somebody was stalking. I mean, why would you be doing this? And then that raises another question, why is anyone doing this? Seriously, who cares? It was my campaign, big deal, you know, truthfully. And yet, someone felt the need to do this, and it raises the question, what else were they taping? What else were they taping? Who else were they taping? That's, that's a real problem. So I put it on because I think all three of us are concerned about it. I think it requires our attention, in part to decide or to try to determine who did it and how it happened. Of course, those people ought to be responsible, but even more importantly, to assure that it can't happen again. So proceed however you'd like. I think Wayne maybe ought to...
Well, I think Wayne could just tell us what he, because he, he did do something I don't agree with, that he didn't do anything. I think he looked to fact find, and I think he should address the question about whether or not we do have a right to privacy in a public building, because I do think that's the overarching issue. And I think we've had experience, I know with one of our department heads who was at a meeting of the retirement board and was being filmed, and she raised concern about it, and she was told, frankly, there is nothing that can be done about it, it's a meeting, someone could come and take their picture. So that was the only other experience in the near term, like last two years ago. That was our HR director. That was our HR director.
I'd love to hear your answer, but probably you and I are gonna be on opposite sides legally and we ought not to debate this here. So go ahead and answer it.
I'm not sure we're on opposite sides, but I'm always happy to have a give and take discussion with you. First, in terms of what we have done, what came to us was an FOI request, actually three of them. And in an attempt to narrow down what was needed to respond to these requests, I tried to look at what the primary concern would be of the people making the request. I think the initial question was, does it appear as though this was taken with a camera within our structure? The answer to that, it appears to be as, as Peter's already indicated, there are only two facilities within the building where that ability exists. One is this room and the other is the cone room. It would appear from looking at the photographs that it appeared, that it took place in the cone room. So what I have done in an attempt to answer the questions these folks have fairly raised was I spoke with the people in charge, people that oversee the building, people who oversee the, the camera facilities. The slight difference between this room and the cone room is that facility here is activated within the room, the one in the cone was activated outside the room. I've been up there, I have inspected it, I've been inside the structure, and what I thought we needed to do was try to narrow down, if we could, who might have been the person that did this. And we had, keep in mind, this goes back to 2017. We were able to narrow down the timeframe during which we thought it probably occurred, based on information I'd gotten from the folks involved. We narrowed down the rooms that were requested on that timeframe, and the only time the cone room was used was in September of 2017. We then went back and tried to determine who had access to that structure, that facility back in 2017. We've got a list of those people. We have provided that to the folks that requested it. We have provided the dates to the folks that have requested. We then went back and spoke with the police department in the hopes that possibly there would be some information that they would have. They do have cameras in the building, as Peter has outlined. The difficulty with that is though those recordings are only kept for a limited period of time. So there was nothing that they had back in 2017 that would be of assistance to us. And I think I've indicated that to the folks that made the request. So I think we have narrowed down when it occurred, where it occurred, and the folks that had access to that room at or about that time. And that is a list which I have provided to the folks that made the request. And, go ahead.
If someone accessed the room on that day, do they access it with a card?
They could have accessed it with either a card or with a key.
If they accessed it with a card, would there be a record of that?
None that goes back that far.
How long, how long the records kept?
I will have to double check my files, but I think it's only about thirty days.
And if they accessed it with a key, of course, there'd be nothing.
True. But the, as best we can tell, the folks that had access to that facility with either a key or swipe is rather limited. And in addition to that, you have to keep in mind that if I was the one that had access, I would have to get into the structure and then have the ability to know how to operate the facilities. So it becomes narrower as you work that down.
Of, of the list of people that you have that had access at that time, how many of them have you determined knew how to operate the equipment?
I, I have not determined that. I do not know that.
Have you talked to the people?
I, I, not, no. Keep in mind, this is a question for you folks to decide and direct me on. I have not been requested by you folks to do an investigation. If in fact I were to do that, my approach would be very different. If in fact I was asked to do that, and you have the right to do that, then I certainly would take a different approach to it and, and, and talk to each person on that list.
So if I understand you correctly, what you have done so far is basically respond to the FOIA request, garnering the information you just told us about, but have not really talked to anybody about it yet because there's been no investigation?
There has been, I had to talk to some people to get access to the structure, but other than that, I have not. I will say to you, we have provided to the requesters with the help of our IT department, one packet of material, emails and things of that nature. I have made a subsequent request, have a second packet of material which has not yet gone out to the folks in question, but we'll be going out to them shortly, once I've gone through each page.
Have you given, at this point, any thought to how we might better regulate, monitor, or secure those spaces going forward? Forget for a second what happened here. Have you given thought to any changes that ought to be made to the system that would better assure that A, a very small group, if any, could get into it, B, that we would know who those people were, and C, that records would be kept so that in the future, if this were ever to arise again, we could identify the people readily?
I think all of the above.
Pardon?
I think all of the above.
Have you, okay. My, my question was, have you developed a plan to deal with that yet, or can you?
I can, I have not.
So I would like to do two things. And I'll make a formal motion if that be necessary. I would like, number one, for there to be a formal investigation under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen to determine who had access to the room on those days. Wayne has told you already knows who theoretically could have, but that would involve interviewing the people, interviewing the person who disseminated on the internet the picture, since he obviously received it from someone, and taking such other steps as counsel felt appropriate to try to determine what has transpired. Secondly, the second part of the motion would be to have the town attorney present to us for our consideration, modifications or changes in the system so as better to secure the rooms and the recordings and to prevent unauthorized filming in the future.
You have made a motion, but people wanted to speak too.
Oh, okay.
And I told your flight that I was a recorder and I told Tony.
I recognize you.
So, you don't get to recognize her for this purpose. So I, yeah. And Tony, I gave you the nod, I would... But, so your, your, your motion sort of sits out here.
Let, let it hang.
Mr. for Selectmen, Selectmen Litback, Selectmen Litback and Tonner, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning, and I wanna thank First Selectman for his comments regarding civility and the, the personal attack on me. It is very much appreciated. On or about September twenty-first, an individual or individuals made a deliberate and calculated decision to enter a room on the second floor of this building that is kept locked. That individual or individuals turned on a video recording device to surveil a meeting booked by a political party to conduct, conduct campaign activities. In any Town Hall room reserved to conduct an activity other than a hearing or meeting to which the public is invited, there is an expectation of privacy. The very nature of this event, phone banking for a particular political campaign, indicates that it was not a public event. Moreover, individuals present in a closed-door meeting in their own Town Hall do not expect their interactions to be recorded. In addition to the fact that topics are covered that are not the business of anyone other than those in the room, there may be intensely private information shared about a parent's health, a friend's death, that no one expects to be observed or, or heard by a stranger. The surveillance that occurred on or about September twenty-first in the cone meeting room was a violation of the trust between the Town of Greenwich and its residents, in my view. That it was done for political purposes makes the act even more serious. We've been told that the event was likely not captured on a microphone. I hope that that was the case, but in many respects, that is beside the point. A microphone could have been, a microphone could have been placed in the room and, and people would not necessarily have realized it. So, and even video surveillance is violative. But what happened after the recording is even worse. The individual or individuals who surreptitiously recorded the event shared it with, perhaps among others, an associate and former officer of the Town Republican Party at Dedakis. We know that because Mr. Dedakis posted a picture, picture from that surveillance on social media. As noted previously, I was in that picture. Mr. Dedakis also posted another picture taken of me in another room in Town Hall. As I sought to learn the circumstances of the recording, I did file a request under the Connecticut Freedom of Information statute. I did receive a list of the individuals who had access to the room as well as other documents, but none of the documents answered the question of who specifically conducted the surveillance, who shared the videotape of the surveillance, and how it came into, came to be in the possession of Mr. Dedakis. I asked the town's attorney what additional steps were being taken to address the serious action. Was there going to be an investigation? He responded that there was, he was unaware of any. Today, I am here to ask the selectmen to do the following. One, publicly condemn the activity by a town employee or someone acting with the permission of a town employee using town resources to surveil a private citizen. Number two, to explain what action has been taken to date, and this has happened today, and I'm very happy to have learned it, what action has been taken to date to learn the identity of this individual and how the material came to be in the possession of Mr. Dedakis. Has he been interviewed? What did he say? I understand that nothing has been, has occurred, and I would ask that the selectmen approve Mr., or Mr. Litback's motion. And third, take steps to ensure that this does not happen again, or that if it does, the town knows who did it, such as requiring a key swipe with the date and time that will be recorded for posterity so that we will know exactly who opened the door to the room at that time. at that time. The First Amendment of our Constitution expressly protects the right of free, free speech and association, with political speech being of the highest order, deserving the highest level of protection. I believe that my constitutional rights were violated on or about September twenty first, and perhaps on other days of which I am unaware. It happened on town property using town resources by an individual who had access to or was given access to a locked room in town hall containing recording of, equipment. I, as a residence here, as a resident, and we as a town have a right to know it happened, what our public officials are doing to remedy this violation, and what steps they're taking to ensure that it does not happen again. So I, I end with my reiteration of a request that the board also condemn this action. Thank you.
Tony? Mr. Turner?
Gentlemen, good morning, and thank you likewise for giving what we think is a very, very, very serious issue. I, I think we have a serious problem for additional reasons than we've already heard. One of them is, at least as I understand it, that Edward Dedakis is the individual that posted the four photographs on Twitter, is also currently a member of the RTM, at least so says the RTM website. It's, it's very, very disturbing to see an elected official possibly involved in this, and that can speak for itself. But I think the greater issue is one of trust in town government. If you think about a prospective, a prospective resident of Greenwich, and they understand that there's distrust in town government, why, why would they want to be here? And this is a risk that we can't take of having lack of trust in government. And, and I'll be very direct and acknowledge my candor. Gentlemen, this appears as though it was an inside job. It was an inside, it had to be an inside job. And we're sitting here today, fastly approaching, or rapidly approaching, ninety days since this was brought to anyone's attention, given, giving those that were involved plenty of time to destroy records, to do a lot of things that could cover up the tracks. This is not Greenwich, Connecticut. At least, this is not the town that I moved to twenty-eight years ago to have my sophomore read in the paper as to what happened, and then ask me the question, "Dad, won't, won't someone get in trouble for this?" I can't answer that question today to my sophomore that attends the high school. And when it hits the kitchen table, like it has hit the kitchen table today in many homes around Greenwich, we have a problem. Where can you start with the investigation? I must say, I'm quite taken aback that no one has raised a very routine approach to such, and that is, you look at phone records, both cellphone and landline phone records, you look at text records, you look at CPU processing records on computers, be they privately owned or in the town, and you can quickly determine whether, you can quickly determine if there are any correlations between two individuals, several individuals, that were engaged in this, let alone looking at email records. And from what I could tell so far from the results of the Freedom of Information that we received, we being the Greenwich Democratic Town Committee, those email correlations haven't even been considered to be looked at yet. So if you do go down the path of an investigation, I assure you that it can be simple, it can be quick, to get to the bottom of exactly, of exactly what happened. It also raises some other concerns around employee or volunteer code of ethics violations. It raises a, a security infrastructure question around how are we archiving security tapes, if we are? Where are we archiving them? Who has access to the archives? And so forth. So there is a, for the lack of a better term, there is a town management issue. It's really an opportunity to move ahead and, and put in an infrastructure that manages very well the, the very topic that we're, that we're talking about today. The, the news clearly has accelerated mistrust in town government. And there's only three people that can correct that, gentlemen. Only you can restore it, and I would ask that you no longer stand by, because if you ignore it, you will only empower it. And so far, it has been ignored. It has been ignored for too long, and I know what we're asking today will take courage, but each of you have the courage. I've seen it. It's there. In addition to that, it's going to take time, but you must give it the time to restore the trust in town government that we all know we need. Let's get back to putting the town of Greenwich, particularly town hall, back to being a center of excellence. We hope you will commit to that.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Good morning, again. As I mentioned before, I'm here as a private citizen and resident today, as one of the people depicted in one of the images that was put on social media. I also had submitted a Freedom of Information request and had submitted an email to the Board of Selectmen, which First Selectman Tessie did respond to, advising me that, you know, the Law Department and Human Resources was looking into it. I would like to, as I agree with everything that's been said already, and also request the investigation, I would just like to add, I have a bit of a different angle, of course, because I work in this building every day. When I come to Board of Selectmen meetings as an employee, I expect to be recorded. I know that those meetings are recorded. I, I do so willingly as part of my job. When I walk through the halls, I know that there are surveillance cameras. I expect that as part of my job. When I come to town hall as a private citizen and resident to do something unrelated to my job and my work, I do have that expectation of privacy, as I did that evening when I was here. My concern is a little broader in that until we know who did this, and until we know how to prevent it in the future, I'm here every day. I don't know who this person is that took that information. I do know that on the list of potential people are people that I work with every day that are in this building with me. I don't know what their motivation was. I can only assume what their motivation was, but we don't know. And so I have a concern, from a personal safety standpoint, why is this person taking pictures, putting it out on social media? Are they following me when I'm at work? Are they taking pictures of me doing other things when I'm at work? When I leave? Do they know my vehicle? I have a, a much different concern that I've asked you in my email to address. I will say that I got a response from the HR director, who said that, as far as she knew, she'd not been asked to look into any of this. So I'm here again, asking that it be looked into, and I clearly feel strongly enough to, to come on my day off and be late to opening day at Yankee Stadium to wait my turn, to, to ask you to please approve Selectmen Litback's motion for an investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I, I thought Ms. Pepe did reply to you and, and responded in the context that this was not a matter related to your role as a personnel, and therefore she wasn't going to pursue it. She was going to let legal pursue it. But I'm willing to stand corrected if that's not my recollection.
Right. So her original, I sent an email to her, her original email did say, "To the best of my knowledge, this matter has not been given to the Human Resources Department to investigate. We only get involved with specific complaints involving employees." I would expect that if it was determined that there was questionable actions on the part of an employee, we would then be brought into the matter in some way. And then I responded that, you know, I assumed from her email that meant no investigation was being done, to which she replied that it was her understanding that the Law Department was looking into it. But again, you know, I, I would mention that there are town employees, current town employees on the list of people who had access to that room. And that's why I requested the investigation, because if HR does need to get involved, there's no way to know that unless we determine who it was that accessed the room. Because if it was a current town employee that I work with every day, that becomes an HR issue for them to look into.
Got it. Thank you. Oh, Jeff.
Two quick additions, if I can. The general scene has been well described by the people who spoke before me, but I think it's worth mentioning, first of all, that eavesdropping is a crime. It's fifty-three A, one eighty-eight. Crimes are broken into three categories. There's felonies, misdemeanors, and violations. The most serious crimes are felonies. This is a felony. So if it's a felony in the penal code of Connecticut, it should be taken seriously. The second feature that should be mentioned is, almost as disturbing as the event itself, is a sense of an arrogance or an impunity with which a person then freely publishes it. And the fact that the person who published it through Twitter was a current member of the Republican Town Committee and a former chair of the Republican Town Committee creates an awkwardness, particularly for my Republican colleague, who for a long period of time has been a very soul of integrity, as he has served tirelessly as a First Selectman. And I'm inviting this First Selectman, as he finishes his term, to have the same strong sense of integrity when he distances himself from what plainly is an unethical and inappropriate act, republishing an illegally obtained eavesdrop of a confidential meeting, and refer this for it to be investigated properly with a good third-party distance between the, this panel and the people who are doing the investigation. It plainly can be referred to the Police Department. It is a felony. It plainly can be handled well by the town attorney, who has investigated matters like this before. It doesn't matter to me which way, but it should not be ignored. Rather, deal with this with the same strong hand that, for a long period of time, this administration has been handling the town affairs. And I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. So your motion is still on the floor. I just wanted to ask Mr. Fox, in terms of the first part, can you speak to the, the legal aspect of it? I mean, people have thrown out various assertions about what is or is not a crime. I know that we just got through a very unfortunate situation with the murder and body that was disposed of here in town, in which a town employee photographed the decedent, a murder victim, circulated it, and it was deemed not to have criminal, there was no criminal finding on it, but it was addressed from an employment point of view. So that's an area, I'm not an attorney, can you, can you, at first and foremost, in terms of going forward, I think we need to know the full extent of, you know, you've heard eavesdropping, right to privacy, no right to privacy. I think that has to be an integral part of any further steps taken, under, what is the law? One, then two, what is, things that can be done going forward, I mean, in terms of instituting, you know, operationally, hard key access that records and so on and so forth?
Couple of things, if I might. Let me go back for one second, make one clarification, if I could. In my office, we see FOI requests on a very regular basis. And that's fine, that's appropriate, that's what we do for a living. But sometimes folks fail to draw distinction between what is an FOI request and an investigation. Generally speaking, we see FOI requests in anticipation of litigation. We see it from Citizens of information. We see it dur, during litigation. We have seen it in the middle of a trial. So we get FOI requests on a daily basis. But generally speaking, an FOI request is a, is a demand under the statute to provide documentation. It is not a conclusion that is drawn. It is not an investigation. It is not what someone said or didn't say, or what we think they would say. It is a, a request that we provide documents, very distinct from an investigation. If in fact it is the will of your body that we do an investigation, we certainly would do that expeditiously. In terms of your, your, your question, Peter, conceptually, what we are looking at here is the concept of the right of privacy. We are one of the few states in this country that does not have a statutory right of privacy. There is case law, which goes back to the eighties by our Supreme Court, in which they recognize the right of privacy, based on the common law concept of trespass. There are several different concepts under, under which that right of privacy might be established. I won't bore you or our guests with all of the details, but generally speaking, it's broken down into four concepts. One would be the unreasonable intrusion upon seclusion of another, and the publicity given to a private fact highly offensive to the individual. There seems to be the, the one standard, a, a, number one, is there a reasonable expectation of privacy, which is a factual question. And number two, whether the, the act in question was highly offensive to a reasonable person. Both of those standards have to be met for one to sustain a position of a, of a, of a civil right of privacy. Second concept is why it's called false light. The information is so intimate and so, and so viewed, that again, it is offensive to the community's sense of decency. And that standard, it has to be a finding of actual analysis. Number three would be the concept of intrusion into your seclusion, which we intentionally intrusing physically or otherwise upon these, the privacy of an individual or the seclusion of the individual. Again, it has to be beyond the limits of decency. And the fourth standard is the appropriation of another name or, or identification, appropriation for one's use, the name or likeness of another. Again, there has to be done in such a way that it is, is, it is an invasion of privacy and a violation of a reasonable expectation of privacy, and highly offensive to a reasonable person. So there is a civil cause of action that one may institute. Those standards would have to be met. I'm not passing judgment on whether or not they are met here, but for one to be successful, that kind of, of a, of a, of a claim, those standards of a reasonable expectation of privacy, and that the concept itself is highly offensive to the reasonable person. That's the standard under law in the state of Connecticut.
Do you, so Wayne, do you have a question, if you have that, that's civil versus criminal?
I think the, I'm not, I'm not capable of passing judgment on whether or not this was a criminal act. That would not be for me to do, that would be for the Police Department. But the concepts that we normally talk about were things such as voyeurism, which is a, which is a violation of the, of the Connecticut penal statutes. I think the, the one that, that Jeff referenced was the eavesdropping, which is also a violation of the, of the criminal statute. And there are different statutory standards that need to be met to have those, to make it, to make such a finding, whether there would be such a finding, I would leave to the Police Department.
What about, this has come up several times, the question's been asked, and I think I know what the answer is, but it's still, it's still in doubt. So people who use their phones to voice record a meeting, so I have a meeting with Tony, or Tony has a meeting with me, and I decide to record him, and he decides to record me without telling me, is that legal or illegal?
I believe as long as one person is conscious of and aware of the fact that it's being recorded, would not be illegal.
Yeah, it's a one-party consent state.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's another thing, aside from this, that comes up regularly between employees, between employees, between superior's employees, and it's never been, I think that should be put out to people, because I've gotten different responses when I've asked HR that, for saying, "No, you can't do that," and then, "You're anti." Well...
Again, one could, they, I, I, the thing that gets me here, of putting aside for a moment the factual question of whether there is a reasonable expectation of privacy, I would argue to you, when you come and reserve a room in the town, close the door and talk to someone, you have a reasonable expectation of privacy. But putting that aside for a moment, without regard to whether I'm right or wrong in that context, it would be one thing, Wayne, in my judgment, for the town to make a decision that it, as it does with this meeting, that it wants to record meetings. That would be an authorized act by the town. That would be an authorized act by the town. What was done here, to the best of our knowledge, was not authorized by the Board of Selectmen, it was not authorized by the First Selectmen, it was not authorized by any officials that we know of, and I have every reason to believe it, there were none, and therefore it was an unauthorized act and a violation, not just of Joanna and Melissa's rights, but of the town. It was an intrusion upon the town's property. And I think that in itself is wrong. The town's not going to go sue anybody about it, I don't suspect, but it's wrong. It is a violation of the town's right apart from the individual. So I think, no matter how viewed, and candidly, even if, even if it were true, and I don't believe it is, that there's no violation of any statute, law, or criminal statute, even if that was so, I think the three of us, and I think you, and probably most everyone here, would agree, just among ourselves, so to speak, it's wrong. It's wrong, you don't do that. You don't secretly record people. I mean, that's just not right. That's not the standard by which most of us have lived our lives. And so, without regard for a moment to the legal, I, it comes back to something I was talking about earlier. What is going on here? I mean, people talking that way, people acting that way? We don't do that. Would you secretly record someone in their house? Would you secretly record someone anywhere? No. No one in this room would. And that's what was done here. And that's what was done here. And then, I've been careful not to name the person, but then, since they have, Ed Diddakis goes out and publishes it. And you can say that's either legal or stupid. All offers stupid. But you could go either way. And it doesn't make any difference, it's wrong.
I'm more concerned in terms of, on the question of the invasion of privacy, what is the law in the state of Connecticut? That's separate and distinct as to what the criminal law of the state of Connecticut is.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I fully appreciate that.
I think you and I could, or anyone, could talk a long time about whether or not this was expected to be a private meeting. I think we could debate that forever, and I'm not saying what's right or wrong.
Nerlin, did you want to...
Sure.
No, you need to come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please, for the record.
Otherwise, we won't have it 30 days from now.
Exactly. Hi, thank you for your time, Peter, Mr. Littback and Mr. Toner. I'm a private citizen, and I am, I'm sitting here, and I'm just kind of a little bit in, I guess, shock that we're actually even having this conversation. I think it's, there's two issues. One is, was there either a civil or criminal act that happened? And there needs to be an investigation tied to that, right? And once you do the investigation, then you can determine, are the elements meant for whether there was a criminal act that took place, and/or whether there's potential civil penalties that someone can pursue, or civil rights someone can pursue, whether they want to choose to sue or not. But the other question is, what are we saying that we, as a town of Greenwich, want to do, and be, and what are our policies? And I use this building here all the time as a PTAC co-chair. I come into and use the Gisborne Room once a week, I mean, once a month at least. And I do have an expectation of privacy, then, when I go into that room, I close the door, and I'm, no one's listening in. No one, the town isn't allowing its equipment to be used to be listening. And so, there has to be, and I would hope, that as a town, our leaders would stand up and say, "This isn't acceptable," and that we do have a policy, whether the law allows it or not, that there is an expectation of privacy, and if that isn't being met, then we will do something about it. So, yes, I do think there needs to be an investigation, to see what transpired, but also, as a town, we should set what the policy is irrespective of what the law says, as to what our town expects from its residents, and what the town is willing to accept. And I would say that, yes, we all, when we come into this building, if we choose to use the facilities of this building, as private citizens for different things, should have that expectation of privacy. And if we don't, then there should be a policy that makes it clear to all of those who walk into this building, to say, "You can and may be recorded." Fine, at least we have noticed.
It does say that as you...
Not in, not in the rooms, not in private rooms.
It does say...
In the hallways.
But it uses the word surveillance, video surveillance.
Okay, well, then maybe there needs to be an explanation as to what that means.
Like AD, service dogs, no alcohol, no firearms, I think six, different...
Okay. I don't think that it would be, that it's reasonable that probably 90% of the population here in Greenwich assumes that then, when they walk into a town hall room, and they're booked it for a reason, that they're not going to be videotaped and/or recorded. I mean, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn on that. So my point is, there should be a very clear policy as to what that is, irrespective of what, of what is being done on the investigation front. So, thank you.
Great. Excuse me.
Nerlin?
Did you just spell your name, please, for the record?
Sure. E.R., E-Liken Library, Y.N., Pearson, P.I.E.R.S.O.N.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We had interviews scheduled at 11:00 and 11:15.
No, no, that's...
Anyway, but go ahead.
No problem. I'm interested in the ongoing discussion at any event.
I'm not rising to be interviewed.
Correct. Although, if you want, go right ahead. My name is Michael Spilow, S.P.I.L.O. I'm here in my capacity as a resident of the town, although I'm a member of various town organizations. I will point out that Connecticut is a two-party consent state, according to the state statutes. I'm reading a letter by the Connecticut Office of Legislative Research. It says that, under Connecticut law, it is illegal for a person to record a telephone conversation without the knowledge of all parties to the conversation.
You guys have telephone?
Well, I would assume that that means any conversation. However, I would also point out that there's, as far as I know, no evidence of any recording of conversations or of exchange of communication. What was discussed are photographs. And photographs are not an exchange of communication, that's a function of just presence and determining presence. I would also say that these photographs were presented as part of evidence to a investigation or a claim of infraction of campaign finance laws. So, as such, they would probably also be protected under whistleblower. So this is, this is a much more complicated issue than just the function of somebody taking photographs within the town hall. Because even if those photographs were taken surreptitiously, they may be protected as disclosure of illegal activity, if the person who took the photos had reasonable and was acting illegally, but had reasonable suspicion that they were documenting evidence. So if we were having a conversation, and I thought you were doing something illegal, I may record that conversation, even though it's a two-party consent law.
I assume you're making all this up. I mean, there's no evidence of anything you could say.
I'm, the evidence...
I'm hypothesizing that if all of this had happened...
No, no, no. The evidence is that the AP reports that the photos, this is an AP report that's available online. I'm not aware of this issue, I was not aware of this issue at all until today, and I'm going based on reports from the Associated Press that say that the photo was presented by Ed Diddakis as part of a conversation discussing the investigation by the Connecticut Republican Party. So this is highly political, to begin with, of violations of campaign finance law.
I don't know where the AP got this information, but that's wrong. But I understand you don't know one way or the other.
I don't know one way or the other, but that's a possibility that I'm raising, so...
I have no idea what's wrong.
What is wrong?
The notion that this was presented as part of an investigation into campaign finance law. That is wrong. That isn't true.
Okay. Not that the investigation is...
But that's neither here nor there, you're not aware of that, one way or the other.
Right. It's just based on the AP report that that is the case. So you're asserting the report is wrong. In any event, that's my comment.
Thank you.
So, and this is a discussion for us. So Mr. Littback has made a motion, he enumerated, I believe, three things that he wanted to occur. I believe, and if there's a second. Being there's no second, I'd like to just make a request to Mr. Fox. First and foremost, I think it's imperative that we understand what the legalities are as it relates to the discussion of privacy in public buildings, use of recording equipment, and so forth. We need that in the typical fashion that we receive legal briefs from you, and if you need to rely upon outside counsel to do so, I think that would be the first step before we prolong the issue and get into an investigation of something that may or may not even be a violation. Two, I think we need to sit down with the people from 79, who operate the equipment to understand if, in fact, it functions with both audio and video, because when we can determine here, from what we do, when these are off, they cannot record. Is that the case up to, we don't know that, we don't offer the equipment. I think we need to know that. And finally, I think we need to establish a policy in public, publication, as to the fact that GCTV has equipment in place, and whether or not it's operational or not, and institute some type of accountability for the access, since that seems to be lacking from what you have set. So I'd like to make that motion. Second, by Mr. Toner.
I vote no.
So two in favor, one opposed. And so if you could get back to us with those points, we'll certainly work with you on the people at GCTV who are responsible. GCTV is a separate 501(c)(3), and I believe Selectman Marzullo is still the person who is involved with that.
Peter, I'd like to make a statement. I cannot begin to tell you how disappointed and shocked I am. And I've served on this board with you guys now for some 19 months. You have never, until today, disappointed me, even when I disagree with you. You have now disappointed me, and I'm terribly discouraged. How you could not ask for an investigation and a condemnation of what has occurred baffles me. I will never understand it, I will never get over it. You have, in my judgment, totally abdicated your responsibilities here. And I say that to two people who I am personally fond of, and with whom I have enjoyed all my time here. This is a low point. This, for me, is a low point. I don't know how or why you're doing this, but I respectfully suggest to you, as respectful as I can, you are making a mistake. What you are doing is wrong, what occurred here is wrong, you ought to investigate it, you ought to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Going to GCTV and Drew Marzullo is not the answer. That is not going to accomplish what ought to be accomplished here. I'm just very, very disappointed, I'm sorry.
I would just say that it's a first step. We didn't, we didn't close the door to what you were talking about. But I, for me, I want to get basic foundation. You're talking about the complexities of law, people are throwing out, this is civil, this is criminal. I can't, frankly, with all due respect, you happen to come from a particular political persuasion. I'm not that naive to believe everything you tell me, although you're very nice people, and I like many of you. I want to hear from someone who is an expert, and there's a people of other persuasion in the audience. I think that's a first step that I'd like to take in understanding, because this is not an area that I am remotely familiar with.
And just so you understand, I do appreciate that neither you nor John is a lawyer, and you have every right to be interested in and want to understand the legalities of this. I say to you two things. One, that is not mutually exclusive from causing an investigation. And two, what I said earlier, I respectfully suggest to both of you, and I just know you well enough to know that you agree with me. That's what's so troubling to me, is that this is wrong, whether it violates the law or doesn't violate the law, it is wrong. I know you know it, I know you both feel it, and yet, you don't want to investigate it. I, I'm sorry.
We have, next on our agenda, appointments and nominations. We have a motion to go into executive session for that purpose, on three legal matters. We are now at a point where we would entertain motions on the legal settlements. And the first one, we heard from our Assistant Town Attorney, Mr. Eugene McLaughlin, and that pertains to West Putnam Owner LLC versus Town of Greenwich, 411 West Putnam Avenue, as well as 37 Old Post Road 2. And for purposes of action, I'd ask our secretary to read the item further.
Yeah, I'll need a motion to settle Duckett number HHB CB 17-6039359, for a tax credit of approximately $78,026 against future tax payments. If the plaintiff were to have prevailed at trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $94,748 plus interest and costs.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Without objection, 3-0. And then we had, did you have a topic?
No.
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 We had two other legal matters that the BET and the RTM claims have agreed upon, and we are the third governing body to have to confirm with the public vote. And those matters are...
The first case is Naranjo versus the Town of Greenwich, with a proposed settlement of $45,000.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, without objection. And there was a second matter, we were advised, has come to settlement with both the BET and the RTM claims.
Okay, and that is Masaccio versus Paredes, with a proposed settlement of $20,000.
Okay. It's moving second, without objection. That concludes the business before the meeting today. The next regularly scheduled meeting is on Thursday, April 11.
Correct.
At 10:00 a.m.
Correct.
Again, I just remind folks that tonight is the budget approval meeting for the 1920 budget, and that begins at 4:00 o'clock in this room. No other further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
12:46.
We're still a tiny lap from now.
Yeah. We were anticipating it was going to go to midnight.
Remember last year, the $5,000 thing you were doing?
Yeah.
Goes on. And we've got all kinds of amendments.
All of it, everyone's... That's what does it, isn't it?
Yeah.
Everything else is pretty basic.
She's still here because she has a car. We have one car missing.
Okay, well, maybe she needs to...
I'll take this water and put it back in the fridge.
Oh, okay. All right, Sandy.